You have present.
It's gotta be food, right?
Yeah, hell yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, jam.
Apple butter.
Oh.
It's rubber.
Yum.
That's good, because I have a refrigerator.
Well, you can have bread. Look at that.
And my freezer.
Oh, it came off. I'm sorry.
What's that?
Oh, the wrapping came off. Sorry. Sour dough. I made it yesterday.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Yeah, I killed myself in that reason. That's why Derek London, I seen him out there shoving and saw this. Oh, the number I gave you for nine pervert, the guy?
Yeah.
I'll call him. He's back. He's back soon for you.
Awesome.
Tracy on yet?
Oh, it's the teens or?
Carol's on now, right?
Yep.
So.
Do you want to give Tracy a minute or you will go ahead?
I just texted him to see how he's been looking in.
Parker, what's up with your shirt?
Loser Club?
I was having a lazy day.
Just wondering what it meant.
Yep. I guess that you never need if you decide you want to.
Parker, you might want to move that microphone so that it's sitting on your on your table. We kept this arrangement because we had negotiations and we're going to have negotiations again next week and we didn't want to move everything again.
Yeah.
Are you get started?
I would.
With Carol anyway? Okay.
Um, you're not gonna have a.
Yeah, we got.
Yeah, we do. We got Carol.
We're good.
Carol, you can hear us, right?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. All right.
Hey, stupid friend. Sorry, I'm not there.
No, no worries.
All right. Well, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you all please rise to the black seat?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, maybe roll call. Tracy Bro has not joined yet. Hopefully he'll be on Zoom. Terry Kamalati.
Here.
Fred Sotomayor.
Here.
Carol Vickery.
Here.
Chair Mitchell's here. Parker?
Here.
Great. Okay. Um, so we're gonna run through a quick agenda. It's gonna be a shorter meeting tonight, hopefully. So review, adjust, approve agendas first step.
I moved to accept the agenda as presented.
I'll say the motion.
Hey, any discussion? Okay, call for a vote. Terry Kamalati.
All right.
Fred Sotomayor.
Aye.
Carol Vickery.
Aye.
Chair Mitchell votes aye. Okay, uh, new business. Can we get the first one?
Nope.
Uh huh. Okay, board resignation position number four. Fred.
That is me. Number four? Oh, that's me.
I'm just reading off the agenda. I don't know if you are.
It's four.
There you go.
Right. Yeah, I don't know what I need to do officially, but I moved out of district, so I'm gonna have to resign my seat as on board.
All right. So we do have to make a motion on this one to accept your resignation or deny. I think we should deny, but.
So I moved to accept Vice Chair Fred Sotomayor's resignation to declare that Jerks' School Board Position Four is vacant as of May 12, 2025.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So I stopped in. I was busily with Dawn and I didn't think of anything to say today, but this has been super rewarding for me. Really glad I did it after year two. And I think there's, uh, I'm really confident where the district is in the direction it's heading right now. So I've really, uh, leaving with my head held high. And the only other thing that I had a couple of goals that I have coming in and most of them were accomplished, uh, other than Dawn, please get rid of the dirt room. That's all I have. And I told her ahead of time, I was gonna say.
Fundraiser. Fundraiser.
Fundraiser, yeah. Five gallon bucket of dirt. Five bucks. And I'll be, I want to be the first customer. And the last. Maybe I'll come with my tractor.
See, that's what we should have given it for a going away present.
A scuba.
Would have been cheaper than bread.
Right, right.
Uh, that's definitely this guy. I wanna, I got a nice little part here from the admin, so I really appreciate that. And, um, everybody's been great. It's just been a great experience. So I appreciate everyone.
So Fred, I just want to say it's been a pleasure working with you, um, and getting to know you over the past year. Um, and you definitely will be missed. But I know that you are on to more exciting things, getting to spend time with your grandkids. So, um, that's awesome. I'm glad you're able to do that.
My wife thinks I'm crazy, but I'm going to go to the Perrydale, uh, school board meeting just to dip my toe a little bit. So if you know about Super might, uh, give them a shout.
Okay.
Warn them. Okay.
Can I vote on this?
Be conflicting.
I'd just like to say that I wouldn't be in this role if it wasn't for you convincing me that it was something that I should partake in over a summer of politics, hey?
Yeah.
Which don't call me for a hundred acres, okay? I think it happened. Um, but it's been great having you on the board and being a part of it with you.
But that's your message is don't call?
Don't call me for a hundred acres of hay. No.
Okay.
I, I think, you know, along with all that, you know, I've really enjoyed it, what you brought to the board, because you kind of brought a different perspective that I hadn't seen. And I really enjoyed it and I enjoyed working with you. And, uh, yeah, I love the unity that we have now. And I hope that continues on. And I wish you the best of luck.
I appreciate it. I really get, enjoyed getting to know you and, um, had a lot of laughs and all, but it was at your expense.
I'm not gonna miss that.
Did, do you know any old guy jokes?
No at all. Okay.
Yeah, Google that. He likes them.
I gave him one the other day for you. You're welcome. I did. I was like Fred would be proud. So I know we approved the agenda, but since I know you were planning, are you still planning on taking off?
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any other comments that's here for Fred? I know you're here. I wanted to ask. No? I just want to make sure. I just want to make sure everyone's good. So. Okay.
Sad and yeah. Yeah, I'm just so happy that the board is in place.
And I really hope that future board, this, what just happened now, that used to not be the case, um, that we just sit around and talk to one another and, uh, man, hopefully you guys keep that going. I, I think that brought, uh, a lot to the community and, uh, the communication between district parents, community and everybody. So hopefully you guys keep that going.
Carol, that's something you said too.
Carol?
Hey, I just wanted to say, Fred, you really set the bar high, um, as far as especially the community. You really had a heart for the kids and getting the community input and having, making sure everybody was heard. And I, I just really appreciate that and want to follow in those footsteps. And I, I just, you are going to be sorely missed. That kind of mirror what everybody else is saying. And I do wish you the very best, but it's been a real pleasure sitting next to you.
Oh, I appreciate that, Carol. And, uh, yeah, I didn't have any friends before joining board. Now I feel like I have some now. So don't, nobody lose my number. If you ever need anything, I'm still, I feel I'll always be part of this community no matter what. And, uh, a shameless plug for the Booster Club auction coming up next.
This Saturday.
This Saturday.
This Saturday. So, um, if anybody plans on going now, I'll probably see you there. So I just bought a house. I don't have any money. Yeah, I appreciate it, buddy. Do I just get up and leave now?
No, we gotta vote.
We gotta vote.
Voice for the state.
Want to bet? All right. All right, and we will call for a vote. Did Tracy end up joining yet? No? Okay. So Terry Kamalati.
All right.
Fred can't vote. Carol Vickery.
I wish I didn't have to, but we're sort of backed in a corner, but I.
That means I could say no. No, I. Chair Mitchell votes aye. Thank you, Fred.
Thanks a lot.
Motion passes. There you go. Is that what you wanted?
Yes.
Good to see you. Bye.
Okay. Sound fine. Say hi sometime.
You better remember your bread. It will be gone. We'll see ya.
Bye. Thank you.
Our hair. Thanks for challenging me.
You've taught me a lot.
Thanks for all your support. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right. See you guys.
Bye, Fred.
All right. Well, that brings us to our four D agenda items. So board vacancy discussion.
So historically, uh, in the past, when we've had a vacancy, uh, we look at the time to the next election. Well, obviously we're two weeks away or two months away from, um, having a person. So I would recommend that we do not fill the seat.
Okay. Carol, do you have any thoughts?
I really don't. I would probably, you know, look to, to Terry for some input on this. So I think I might agree with him.
It seems like a really short section to open it up for anybody else. So I think that's the right decision. We do need to vote on this one as well if we're not going to fill it. So Terry, do you want to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to not fill the vacate Jefferson School Board Position Number Four.
I second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote. Terry Kamalati.
All right.
And Carol Vickery. I like skipping Fred, by the way. It feels wrong. Chair Mitchell votes aye. All right, uh, so four D on the agenda is authorization reduction force. Dawn.
So in order, um, let me back up. So for the past several months, I've been sharing with the board, um, and the community and even the staff um, about our financial issues, um, in the district. And, um, after going through the budgeting process with our business manager, Hattie, um, and working through potential cuts, um, we are going to need to do a reduction in force. Um, and because we are, uh, looking at reducing staff, um, certified staff, we do have to have authorization from the board in order to do that. And that is per Article 20, um, in their collective bargaining agreement under reduction in force. So I'm looking for an approval from the school board um, to authorize me to go forward with the reduction in force.
How big would the reduction be?
I am looking at overall having to reduce, uh, certified staff by, by actually reducing their staff. And this doesn't include not hiring, um, some positions, but 2.25 FTE certified staff.
So 2.5, because I don't understand this very well. Is that two positions? Like two?
Normally, normally a person works 1.0 FTE. So it's basically two and a quarter position is what we would be reducing if you're looking at it budgetarily.
Okay.
Dawn, is there any in the, um, club? Let me look at this. Is there any classified?
Right now I do not have, um, any need to do a reduction in force, um, of classified staff. I am going to be reducing, um, at the administrative confidential level as well. Um, so it's not just our certified group that's taking a hit. It's, it's going to be, um, our office and administrators as well.
So you know, every time, uh, we reduce or we have a, you know, reduction in force, there's a reason behind it. So I'm going to ask you, is that reason because enrollment? Is that reason because, uh, you know, financially? Or is it a combination? Or, or you know, what, what is it?
Right. So the biggest reason is because, you know, back in November, I believe, we brought to your attention, um, there's going to be an increase in pers rates. Um, that increase in pers rates is going to be at a cost of over $400,000 to the district. We also have a decline in enrollment, um, with us graduating 70 seniors and we are anticipating only picking up, 40 to 50 kindergarteners. Um, 50 would be at the high end, but typically our numbers in, in kindergarten have been 40 to 46 kids. Um, we're looking at a decline of 30 students. That's an additional $300,000, um, that we have to cut. So right there, we're looking at a $700,000 kind of deficit to start the school year. Since the majority of our funding really goes to pay for salary and benefits of our staff, the only way to make such an impact, um, in cutting back on what we're spending is to reduce staff. Um, I did also make a reduction in, um, and this is, you'll see this in our budget, um, also reducing our supply budget um, across the board from top to bottom. Um, so, yeah.
Carol, listen to me say.
Carol?
I do appreciate, Dawn, that you've been really transparent with us with these numbers. This isn't the first time we've heard this. And I, 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 as much as I don't like this, I do trust you and your judgment and your decision on this. So I would like to make a motion. I don't have the paper in front of me, but to, um, give you the authority to reduce deduction. I'm saying this wrong.
You're doing good, Carol.
Hey, uh, Carol, why don't you let me make a motion? Because I have it in front of me and you can second it.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, so I moved to approve the given, all right, I moved to approve giving this superintendent authority to proceed with reduction in force in accordance with the terms outlined in Article 20 of the Licensed Collective Bargaining Agreement.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I have a couple more questions.
I have some too. You go ahead.
Okay, so Dawn, um, have you let the staff know which ones are going to be reduced or, or that, or let me see, have you left the, um, the classified, the certified know that we're going to, um, have a reduction in force?
I've been talking with the union president and vice president for several months, um, letting them know that this was coming. Um, we've, um, I've been working on what are, because we have to come up with a list of staff, a list of programs. Um, we've had conversations about what that looks like. Um, I can't discuss that here because it would, it would give, you know, away confidentiality. Um, but yes, they are fully aware um, that this is happening and, um, worked with them on, um, the list of, of staff and the reductions that would need to occur. So, yeah.
You know, and, and I knew that because, uh, we've talked before about that, but I appreciate that you publicly state that so that anybody listening to this or people in the audience understand that this isn't something that we just came up with and you're trying to hide it till the end of the year. You know, so I do appreciate that.
I also, um, I think it was, was it last week or the week before? I can't remember now. Um, went to each building and talked to each building, um, talked to their staff members during staff meeting on, it was an early release Wednesday. And I let them know kind of where the district stood budgetarily. It was right before the budget, um, documents were released. So I wanted them to know what we were up against. Um, and I also shared with them that we were looking at a reduction in force. Um, so everybody has been made aware that this is coming. It's not an easy decision to make. Um, I think we've cut as much as we can possibly cut. Um, we're trying to save money as much as we possibly can. So this is just, just where we are at this point in time.
And, uh, also to people that are in the audience or people that are listening that along with this Article 20, it says in there that if we, you know, beginning of school year, see that we're going to open this job back up, person that is, uh, is reduced has a first option of coming back if they, if they haven't already taken the job.
Correct. They do have recall rights.
Right.
Um.
That's a good way of saying it.
Yes, yes. So in the event that, you know, for some reason we've, we got extra money, um, or we, you know, popped up an enrollment and we weren't, you know, we weren't expecting that. Um, then yes, we would, we would go back and try and make people whole as much as possible.
Okay, that's all I got.
Okay. Um, I think Carol summed it up really well, Dawn, that you've been really transparent about, you know, financials and the changes that are coming. I think it's hitting a lot more districts than just us.
It is. Everybody around us is, is cutting and, um, some are having to cut a lot. Yeah.
Well, I appreciate the transparencies. I'm sure a lot of other people do too. Um, so my only question in the spirit of transparency is I know that we have our budget meeting this week. We have a secondary budget meeting scheduled. Um, and we're going through bargaining. There's a lot going on right now financially. Do we have an idea of when we might know where we sit with things?
Um, I needed to wait to get approval from the board before I had conversations, uh, with staff. My hope is to try and do that this week.
I feel like, oh, excuse me, still a flume of a throw. Feel like I might be throwing you a hard ball, but I understand why you're reducing force. One of my concerns is when those positions are gone, where does the work go? Because those employees are still doing valuable work in the district. Will it just, will it be spread out among people? Will those delegations go to other people? I had heard from a relative of mine who had someone who worked in the school, there was someone who had to fill, fill like three different posi- three different positions in one day because they were show under staff. I would only be concerned about staff maybe having to overwork to fill the positions that those roles had.
Yeah. I will tell you that, um, some of the, the workload, at least in, in my area, um, is going to go back to me. And then I will have to distribute other tasks to other people. Um, but my goal is not to overwork and overwhelm people with additional tasks. Um, so. But yeah, it's, you're right. It does have to be distributed to other people. Um, I, I am hoping to shoulder a lot of that so that other people don't have to do it.
If Fred isn't here, I'm going to say it. Remember you are not exempt from that of being overtasked and overburdened and overloaded. So I'm just making that clear.
I appreciate that.
I know how hard you work already. So please be mindful of that.
I will, absolutely.
I would just like to mention quickly that Tracy's doing this.
Hi, Tracy.
Hey, everyone.
Um, we're just doing some comments about the reduction in force. Do you have anything you wanted to say?
Uh, no, um, I don't, I, I don't believe so. I knew it was coming. Well, at least I felt that it was coming. It was probably inevitable. Um, and, uh, I'm, uh, pretty confident that, uh, the district is making the proper choices, uh, that benefit the children's academics to the best of their ability in the circumstances.
Oh, Tracy, we already have a motion and a second. So that just leads us to a vote unless there's any other comments or discussion.
Does anybody have any, uh, negative comments towards it that I might need to hear, uh, now that I'm logged in? Sorry about how long it took.
Just that none of us like it.
Yeah?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Um, all right, well, I can, uh, I can move forward with, uh, confidently with a vote on it.
Terry, did you have one missing?
Yeah. Well, the motion was already made.
Yeah.
So why don't you reread the motion? So Tracy hears it.
Okay, so the motion, Tracy, and for everyone else is, um, I move to approve giving superintendent authorization to proceed with a reduction in force in accordance with the terms outlined in Article 20 of the Licensed Collective Bargaining Agreement. And it's, the motion was made by Terry and seconded by Carol.
Okay. Sounds good.
Um, if there's no other comments, um, I will go ahead and call for a vote. Uh, Tracy Bro.
Aye.
Terry Kamalati.
Aye.
Carol Vickery.
Aye.
And Chair Mitchell votes aye. All right, uh, that brings us to comments from the audience. About anything? No? Okay. Do you have anything submitted? Okay. Any board comments?
I, uh, yeah, I got, uh, some, um, or a couple, several months ago, I mentioned to, uh, to Jen, if we could have some suggestion, comment suggestions put in the Health Resource Center. And, um, because there are people that use it quite a bit and, and I, I have, uh, five of them here. Three of them are in Spanish, which, uh, Terry so graciously read for me and explained what they meant in English. And, um, two of them are in English here, but basically every one of them is very grateful that we have this available in the community. And they say that there's great staff in there. And even one person said, um, that they would volunteer in there if we wanted to open it up more. And they all said, thank you for our kindness. So I, I just wanted to know that a lot of people in the community go, want to know, how's that actually being used? And, um, obviously there's a lot of things in there that, uh, there are, uh, health needs in there as far as hygiene. There's washer and dryers in there. There's a shower in there. Uh, there, there's clothing in there. There's, uh, school supplies in there, uh, shoes. Uh, there, there's a lot of different things in there that people from the community, uh, come in there and get. So I just wanted to let the board and the public know that, um, it's being well used and people really appreciate it. And that's all I.
Give it to Terry. Carol? Or is that Tracy? Carol?
Thank you so much for sharing that because I've been really curious about how the community feels on that. And that, I love that you brought that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Tracy?
Um, yeah, last month, at last month's school board meeting, um, I just, uh, um, and wanted to say I look forward to getting through our current budget process, which that was, uh, from the board that will start, uh, next week.
This week.
Um, or is it this week? It's this week. And, uh, I just, uh, wanna let my fellow board members know along with the district office that I'm looking forward to getting information on. want to let my fellow board members know, along with the district office, that I'm looking forward to getting information on, uh, at what point do, does our funding, uh, versus ADMW, uh, create a very significant problem for our community in continuing the education process?